We apologize for being late. This is a Commissioners' Court regular meeting set for Tuesday, the 28th day of February 8, 2006, at 9:30. We're approximately half an hour late, approximately 10:00 a.m. First item on the agenda is public comment. Any public comments hanging? Okay. Second item on the agenda is presentation of civil service commission members. Who's in charge here?
The Commissioners requested that we table this for a couple of weeks.
There's a motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tomato. Table. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
What did you table?
The presentation of civil service.
Well, we have -- this is not on the agenda, but we cleared it with council because we have to -- we want to make a presentation of a resolution we passed some time ago to our good friend and community advocate and religious leader, Dr. Reverend Victor Álvarez. And is he here? That young man around where is he? Oh, there he is. Can you come up faster? Faster? We have in Cameron County a community that today is the fourth-largest community in Cameron County, and that's Cameron Park. And it's a community that is considered one of the poorest in the nation and has for many years suffered many difficult times. In the last few years, it has begun to lift itself up and has made enormous progress in the quality of life for the people that live there. We have not only a place that has paved streets and park, a park and garbage collection and so forth, but we also have a place that's graduating kids from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx.
This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few years because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few years because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few years because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few years because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself. This is not something that kind of just happened. It's happened because of the strength of the people that live in that community, the courage that they have, and the character that they bring to Cameron Park. And it has happened because of the leadership that exists in that community. One of those people, one of the main people, is our good friend Pastor Victor Álvarez. And that's why we decided to pass this resolution to recognize him for his leadership in that colony and helping bring it up along with the members of this community to make it the place that it is becoming today, the place that it has in Cameron County in the Bronx. This is the resolution that we passed two weeks ago. We came to the court because this community in Cameron Park had suffered a lot of problems in the last few days because of the lack of leadership in the community. And we have a place that has graduated from high school and college and sending them off to professional schools and a place where the leadership of tomorrow and today is beginning to come out of. And this hasn't happened by itself.[895.81]
Ya se completó el, los planes de ingeniería y este, ya se hicieron los arreglos para los fondos y...
¿Cuándo vamos a empezar la construcción en la segunda fase?
Vamos a subir en cuatro semanas. Sí, vamos a subir, así que deberíamos empezar en unos meses.
Como en dos meses vamos a comenzar construcción en la segunda fase y cuando se termine eso entonces comenzamos la tercera fase. Pero está proyectado terminar toda la colonia igual. Como se mira en el frente, se va a mirar en toda la colonia y los comisionados han hecho compromiso hacer eso. No creo que se preocupen que vamos a parar a un punto, no vamos a ir hasta el día de elección o algo así, ¿verdad? Así no pasa con nosotros. Nosotros tenemos el compromiso con ustedes y se va a cumplir ese compromiso, ¿ok?
Just a few comments Pastor Alvariz. Thank you so much for your involvement in Cameron Park and thank you for your involvement on the Regional Mobility Authority. Because it's great to see an individual that can focus on the immediate needs of his surroundings and try to make a difference there. And after having been there in the last few days and seen Phase One completed at Cameron Park, you know, it doesn't look like Cameron Park. It looks like the city of Cameron Park because it looks nice. You know, the work that was just completed looks excellent and we hope that that will continue in the other two phases. And what you're doing at the Regional Mobility Authority is very critical, not only for Cameron County, for all of South Texas. So I just want to personally thank you for that involvement and seeing the big picture of the needs of the area also are outside of your immediate Cameron Park area. So thank you, sir.
Muchas gracias. Me quedó bien. Además, luego te presto que tengo la casa. Vamos a continuar con la agenda. Si se quieren quedar tan, este es su porte, si quieren, si se necesitan regresar al trabajo, a sus casas, sí, sí, es propio si quieren, como quieran ustedes. Están bienvenidos de aquí.
That's what I was going to say. They have to take care of what's given to them.
¿Es que va a ser difícil? ¿Tiene mucho espacio?
They did an excellent job.
Oh, it looks real nice. I was there last night.
Excellent job.
Okay, all right. Item number three, presentation of County Historical Commission 2005 family report. Is everyone here for the historical commission?
Yes, yes, there is.
That's good.
Muchas gracias a todos.
Hi, Ms. How are you doing?
All right. I'm not Ed Mesa. He dropped this on the last October when I was late to a meeting. So I'm the new chairman of the historical commission. And it's very nice to be here with you. I thank you for your time. I have an hour, is it?
She's good. As much as you need to take.
Oh, fine. Thank you. All right. Moving directly to this report. Seven years ago, I was appointed with your permission to the historical commission. And I was quite awed with the idea that I was actually part of the state government, an agency of the state government. I didn't know that was so. And it gives an importance to what you're doing and the purpose of it. And this report is actually a compilation of the communities that we serve in the county. And we've done our best, and especially with Edna's help, we've gone out to reach the different communities in the district, in the county. You'll notice on page one, how many members? There are thirty-seven this year. There were thirty last year. So I think we picked up most of them from Harlingen, but we're headed to Brownsville this next year. How many meetings did we have? Eleven. But these were six that were public meetings and then there were five that were planning because we all feel a responsibility to give some service to actual specific projects in the county. Where were the communities we met? And you'll notice the very first spot last February was Santa Maria. And of course, the churches of our concern, just as it is of yours. Other towns as followed. Then I want to call your attention to number three. How many volunteer preservation hours did your commission members work this year? I've said there were thirty-seven. You'll notice eight thousand. All right, that's up from thirty-six hundred last year because we were more active and we did have a more accurate account. But this shows you the activity in the different communities. And this is not the thirty-seven people. This is our involvement with other partners in the communities, other development corporations and museums and facilities. And as far as the work with young people, this is where we need the most help. And I would jump to this with the history art contest. This is the idea that was started twenty years ago. And they had a contest. The purpose was they're going to do art contests, many of them, but go back and let them study what was peculiar to their county or to South Texas at least fifty years ago. You move back in time and try to get them to know how it would be without phones, you know, without automobiles, without this kind of thing. But these are supposed to be not only English and history and social studies, but they compete for the prizes that they win. Now, the things that are listed there are from the different towns with the different kinds of things. The most startling group was El De Los Muertos Bacallos. What had started about three years ago with one or two celebrations lasted almost two weeks in the museum up in Harlingen this year. And I even got a paper from Chicago that had a colored photo of El De Los Muertos in the cemetery in Harlingen. So we're national recognition with you. Here you notice Port Isabel has started a junior volunteer program in the museums with ten students. Mercedes and the Science Academy. Brownsville had a summer camp on the story of Brownsville with twenty participants. The difficulty with working with the young people is their time. And particularly when the teachers and students face the testing program that they must accomplish and that they must achieve it. And so we have to find a time and a place for them. And this is difficult and different in each community. Our budget this year was four thousand three hundred and fifty and we did not have an active treasurer this past year. And there were difficulties in communication. We need to almost double that because of what we are attempting. The, do they provide office space? Yes. You all pay a hundred dollars a month to the museums of Port Isabel to house the county files. And that leaves us a safe and secure place for to access the records. But really, we're hoping to move into an office in the courthouse. Gentlemen and ladies, when would you like us to come? They promise us that, yes, sometime when it's finished. All right, the big help that we had also was this county through Edna's introduction, was the first county to send a letter of resolution for the Texas Tropical Trail. And that was, I believe, two years ago. That has come about and we were a part of what began the list serve. Now, there are five hundred members on that list serve. This stretches over to twenty counties. And their meeting was important to us. Now, on the next page, other sources of funding only as individual societies do that. In seven, please check all that apply to your commission. And this has where we attended different conferences. This has not been possible, partly through conflicts and partly through funds. We did attend the one annual conference, one person did. And then the regional conferences are most helpful because it helps show us how to work, particularly the strategies with meeting the public and meeting media. Now, the list is shown as to areas where we worked actively to promote historic preservation. And I would call your attention to the Main Street Program in Harlingen, the certified local government here in Brownsville, also Heritage Trail, the Tropical Trail, and heritage tourism. We have an amazing website. Little Cameron County Historical Commission dot org. I'm glad they did it that way. It's the only thing I can remember now, anyway. There is a marvelous man that lives out, was at outdoor resorts, very competent gentleman from the north. Spent about six months down here and he is producing it. Please look at it. It moves, it has color, and it's going to have more and more announcements, not only for students and teachers, but for the public. Now, on page three, other kinds of things. This history art contest started, was renewed two years ago. And we had in Harlingen the first contest for Level One. Fortunately, a teacher came in with four pictures. That was our local showing. All right, last year we had a three hundred percent increase. We had four campuses and twelve pictures. Now, this year we're already almost across the board in Harlingen and hoping that will be the same in the other towns, too. In addition to that, the art that we want on this history is not just verbal, but one of the teachers, not from the valley, but one of the teachers at Keys Academy in Harlingen, reported two foot of PowerPoint presentation, spent two or three days with background for her kids and asked if she could bring her own poetry. It was excellent. She had eighth and twelfth grade students. So it moved from not just pictures, but poetry. Now, in addition to that, we are hoping this spring, and have had some nibbles and it will happen, historical skits. So this becomes drama that's involved. This is going to be shown at Rio Fines so that the arts there accomplished by the students are going to be more varied. It will include graphic and verbal art. All right, and of course, we can't lose Charle Bay. It's from Brennsville, of course. Festival, the Heritage Festival in July. And La Feria is celebrating its ninetyth birthday. So in addition, there was a wonderful speaker, a black lady, who spoke at the museum in Harlingen, which is now the Arts and Heritage. And this lady gave us what it was like to grow in, grow up in North Texas back seventy years ago. This law, I promise you, I'm not going to read all of page three. I won't insult your intelligence. But I would like to say, this is a brief narrative description of the good, the bad, and the ugly over the past year. All right, the county commission, and he used to strive. And I think this is going forward as far as the state plan for preservation is concerned. This is part of going forward to locate, identify, and preserve historical property. This includes the Tresalap by Rio Honda, the early railroad ties out at La Leona Ranch. There have been increased participations in all of it. The website is successful. The marker was dedicated last March, the Harlingen Air Base and its history. We have much more digging to do on that. After two years, Harlingen has bought two downtown historic properties that were damaged. This is in Pioneer Hill. And they are bringing back, and some of the debris has been used for arches that have been constructed either in of downtown. Now, the, I will go on and leave that, but the Texas Tropical Trail meeting in Cameron County and here again, part of these thirty-seven members, each from the different towns, brought and then came to tell about the laboratories, educational laboratory, learning centers out and about in the county. And we showed Kimberly Garson, the new director of Tropical Trail, what the county looked like, what kinds of things they had in the way of historic materials. Brownsville is now established seven museums. This was amazing to me, including Pan American Round Table Costume Collection. That takes me back to Floyd Roots when she told all these venues in forty-something, all right. Now, and Brownsville Heritage Complex and the digitization of their records. This is a real move that we hope to see all over from the Harlingen Public Library down here to the other places. And we can remodel it for the whole state. There are applications for more historical markers being developed by the different, several of the different towns. San Benito has six historic sites that received local markers in observance of their society's tenth anniversary. More will be placed next year. Port Isabel Museums continue to sponsor a variety of exhibits and programs. And endangered properties in Port Isabel are now being restored. The Historic Yacht Club and the Wile Station. The Day of the Dead that got started is turning into a citywide project in Harlingen that will showcase cultural and heritage activities. Our Lady of Visitation in Santa Maria. We have met with the diocese to secure funds and support this structure. And I think, I know you all have too. This continues to be a concern. We continue to help the county with research on areas where name changes have been requested. And each community is working in one way or the other to preserve their area. We have always included preservation. Our goal is, our weakness is members under age seven. So we need young muscle primarily and also a general awareness in the county. Listed below are several of the, in hand, there are listed the parents of the properties that are endangered. And also the, as I've mentioned, the Santa Maria Church and also other identifiable properties in the other towns. How was the training that the state gave us? Fine. And they have a misnea on Riley, I believe, from Jesus. It works out of Mac Allen. It's marvelous to have someone here to come with us. And we ask that they consider that. Tell us, as I said, we need young muscle to go into this. And I thank you for your time and I hope this is successful.
It is. Thank you very much. Great thorough recording. Appreciate that.
And we appreciate all the work that you, that all of you do. I know that's a lot of volunteer hours.
Okay, I want you to acknowledge my question.
Second.
My commissioner, my commissioner, for discussion, all of the members.
Hi.
I want to jump to item number six. Consideration and adoption of resolutions supporting the Rio Grande Valley Irrigation District Act, the Member Order of Grandy Valley Water Resources Conservation Improvement Act two thousand to authorize additional projects and activities under that act and for other purposes. Wayne Halbert is here and I want to make a brief presentation on this. We, I had a real good meeting this week. We've had a couple of meetings with the irrigation districts and the water and the district to talk about some of the things the county can do to support their efforts to put us in a good position of preserving our water. And there's a good project that they're working on and we ask Wayne to come in and make a presentation to us today. And here he is. Can somebody get the lights?
Good morning, your honor, members of the commission. My name is Bill Morris. Wayne Halbert, probably the leading irrigation district in the, in the valley for innovative techniques in conserving water. I have a brief presentation this morning. I also like to recognize Commissioner Wood for his efforts on the regional water planning group. I think this is no news to him, but this is probably the most bang for the buck in trying to achieve water conservation measures through irrigation districts and the old canals that we have. I'm going to move over here because my changer doesn't. I'll just speak a little louder. Going to talk a little bit about what's going on with the projects that have been completed or underway and what we're looking at from this commission and their support for future projects. First of all, back in the nineties, beginning of the nineties and into two thousand, you're well aware of the water shortages that we have right now. We're pretty blessed with water, but we were like that at the beginning of the nineties, too. It only took three short years to basically close the mouth of the river. We were in a long-term drought. We had increased demand. We also had, to top that off, a demand from the aquatic weeds that were found in the river that also took up the water and choked down the amount of water that came down the river. Purpose of the legislation is to, that was passed in two thousand, which was the Lower Rio Grande Valley Water Resources Conservation Improvement Act. In December two thousand, authorization was made to fund some of the projects that are underway now or completed. And the program focuses to take canals such as this to reduce conveyance losses and improve the efficiencies. Basically, water conservation. It's the cheapest form and most bang for the buck for any of the water management strategies found other than water conservation and home use. That's the cheapest form of conservation. The program authority from the Bureau Reclamation had eleven Texas counties, mainly all the counties within the regional, Region AM, Rio Grande Regional Water Planning Group. Fifty percent cost share. Every district, if they were part of the projects, they had to come up with their fifty percent share of cost. Ceiling cost was forty-seven million dollars. Basically, each of the districts had to submit a report that pertained to both take care of environmental, historical commission. As you know, these districts are over a hundred years old. A lot of them, anything over fifty years old, a lot of things become historical. So that was a quite important aspect of the total project. Every district had to prove their financial capability because they had to basically upfront the money. They didn't get fifty percent upfront. It may be five, ten years before they ever get the money, even though it's been authorized and has not been allocated. To date, there's been nineteen projects that have been authorized. Includes forty-nine miles of canal lining, eighty-seven miles of canal replacement into pipeline, seven miles of new canal, one hundred thirteen metering stations, seven pump recabs, and one new pump plant replacement. You can see this is Cameron County or the San Benito Irrigation District pumping plant replacing a hundred-year-old plant right next to it. Of the total projects, eighty, almost ninety million dollar worth of projects have been authorized. These are the partners, Bureau Reclamation, or the legislation provided for almost fifty percent. Districts provided eighteen percent of their own and Dad Bank almost thirty percent. The program funding, began funding these programs in two thousand and three and about, a little over nine million dollars has been appropriated to date, which is about sixteen percent of the authorized ceiling. The accomplishments to date, eighteen plans have been approved, fifteen reports have been approved, and eleven cost-sharing agreements have been executed. And all eleven of those have started or finished construction. And eight of those have been completed. What will resolve when all these projects are completed in this first round of authorizations is we'll save over eighty thousand acre feet of water. If we, if the irrigation districts can save ten percent of their water that they use, that's the entire municipal supply. And so there's so much more that can be saved from the irrigation that can be transferred at some point either by sale, purchase, a contract with each of the irrigation districts provided for the organization that happens within the area.
How many acre feet of water are used in Cameron County in the municipalities on a yearly basis, total?
Let me think. Do you know?
I can't tell you in Cameron County. Valley-wide, the municipal use is right at two hundred thousand acre feet.
Two thirty?
Two, right at two hundred.
Two hundred thousand. I would say that Cameron County is probably thirty, thirty to forty percent of that total. Hidalgo County has the highest amount. Cameron is second, then all the other ones are a lot less in comparison with.
Thank you.
Not only water, but we save power costs and operation and maintenance expenses also with these projects.
And those are all in region, that include all of Region AM, right?
Yes, they're all in Region AM, yes. The funding, North American Development Bank furnished twenty-six million. I don't think that's going to happen again. This was really a godsend for these projects because a lot of people, a lot of the irrigation districts have. It's very difficult for them to fund this project because if they have to spend five million dollars on a project, they have to come up with five million to start operations. And most of them can't hardly manage the two and a half million cost share, much less coming up with the additional two and a half million waiting for the legislative appropriations to come forward. And so it's really a difficult situation. And the ones that have gone forward are really trying to find ways of selling water rights, selling some excess property, raising the rates, whatever they can do to make their system more cost-effective. The federal legislation, the nineteen project, forty-three million was authorized and nine million has been appropriated, which means that it may take another five, ten years before the rest of it's appropriated. And that what we're asking your support on is additional authorization that has, that is up at the federal government right now that we need a lot of support, just like we got a lot of support when the initial two thousand act was passed. We need the support to continue on with momentum that has occurred. And there's forty-seven million dollars with nineteen projects awaiting passage in the Senate. I mentioned Wayne and being the leader.
Can I ask you something on the, on the authorized amount? The, what is it, the twenty-three million?
Yes.
You said that they appropriated nine million. What is the status of the further appropriations on that? I mean, are we, are y'all having problems on that? You said, are we competing with, you know, Iraq and now New Orleans and everything else?
Of course.
How does that, how's that working out?
Definitely. In two thousand and three, they appropriated about one point two million for the projects. In two thousand and four, it was four million. And in two thousand and five, when we had Iraq and Katrina, one point two, one point three. So right now, there's fifteen million dollars requested for federal payments. They have obligated seven point seven. So they're about seven million dollars, seven and a half million dollars behind. And at a million dollars, a million and a half per year spread over the amount of projects, it doesn't go very far. And so, yes, we are hurting on that.
And what, and I think you told me this, Wayne, but I can't remember right now. What, what agency does this go through?
The Bureau Reclamation administers these funds. And this is from them. This is their two thousand six point one or from the.
Is that under the U.S. Department of Agriculture or is it?
It's under, no, actually, it's under the Department of Interior.
Okay.
And so it's, it's personally, you know, probably, we don't expect probably much more than that. I think the. I think last year, I remember Senator, or House recommended zero and one recommended two.
The House recommended ten million. The House has held a ten-million recommendation almost every, almost every year since the authorization. We have had problems in the Senate, even though sometimes they recommend more. We've had a hard time after goes to conference and getting more than two-and-a-half billion on a, on a good year and a million and a half on a bad year. But we are asking for ten million again to get.
And that ten million is matched, or not?
Yes.
Okay. I think what you were saying on the zero recommendation, that's been the administration's budget.
Administration.
Has been zero. I think, I think the House and the Senate.
Now, last year at the Senate, we did get zero from the Senate, this last, this last year. However, in conference, it came up to the one-point-four seven.
So all you, all you get out of that is a total of three million dollars, masamenos?
Right. Whoever's been waiting in line, as you can see on that sheet, those are the ones that have been actually spent. And so it'll take the first in, the first out appropriations. If you haven't spent it, then you're not in line this early to get it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no problem. And wanted to also mention, Wayne handed out a newsletter, but one of the things that it's not only water conservation within the conveyance system, it's water conservation and delivery to the farmer, the farmers. And what Wayne's project is, any questions? I don't know if it'd be dangerous about it, but three-point-seven million dollars sponsored by the Water Development Board to look at conservation and metering within the on-farm. And I've got a couple of slides here. It's basically data collection and on-farm measurement, measuring how much each farmer uses. And so that is typically in irrigation districts, they open the gates and say, okay, that's about, that's a watering. And they don't know whether they're getting six inches of water, four inches of water, or ten inches of water. And then you see a lot of it, the tailwater goes, you probably go to many districts and you see, you drive down a dirt road and it's running, running down the road. So part of what Wayne's program is to really take a look at, from that second part of it, not only just conveying it, but also bringing it into the things of the farm land.
This project, this project that we're working on is a ten-year project, and it's a demonstration of the different methods of agricultural water conservation initiatives. And what we're trying to do is give the farmers the tools to make the proper decisions in their, in their agricultural water conservation. We've known for a long time that certain activities in water conservation were, would save us a lot of water, but we can't afford it. The farmer can't afford to pay a thousand dollars an acre for a water conservation practice on a prop that yields a hundred dollars an acre per year. So obviously, so what we're trying to do is, through this project, is give the farmer the tools to know what his, what his threshold is as far as his financial ability and the best, the best activities that he can accomplish. This, this is an additional four million dollars and three-point-seven five million dollars that the Harlingen Irrigation District was able to give from the Water Development Board, which complements what we're doing in our water conservation projects. And we're, we're spreading that throughout the valley. It's not just done in the Harlingen District, but it's done throughout the valley. We're using farms and farm activities throughout the valley.
What year are you in now with this project?
This is the first, this is actually the first real year. We started in the middle of last year, so this is the, this will be our first year.
Okay.
Just gonna show you just a few, a few pictures of the successes and the projects that have gone through. First of all, talking about canals and pipelines. This, I think A&amp;M did a study that said there was more leakage from a concrete-lined canal than an earthing canal. Well, maybe this, this might be one of the reasons why. A lot of the, a lot of canals that were built, you know, over fifty years ago, not all look like this, but they're in dire need of repair.
When those canals were originally built, was there any other assistance other than local? Do you know, I mean, do you know historically?
Yes, back in the fifties, there was what we call the reclamation projects, where the Bureau of Reclamation actually had low-interest loans. They weren't grant funds, but they were low-interest loans that the, that the districts were able to devote bond issues and, and take advantage of those low-interest loans to do some of these projects. Most of the districts in the valley did a certain amount of that. Our particular district, I think, did somewhere in the four to five million dollars' worth of that kind of work back in the, in the fifties and sixties, which was, which was a great deal of work back in that time. But those, those funds were loan funds, and there hasn't been any thing of that nature since then.
Since then, okay.
And I think the districts that did those things in the fifties and the sixties and took advantage of that, you can see a big difference in those districts that have those improvements made as opposed to the ones that may not have taken, taken that into account. You see more of these, these types of facilities in those districts.
My mom doesn't know this, but that's where I learned how to swim.
Well, you know, your secret's safe. You see that basically taking those old canals, sometimes it's not worth putting, putting a liner in there. The bigger canals would put liners, but where we can put something, you know, in the neighborhood forty-eight to fifty-four inch or less than we put in pipeline and lining the rest of them. And so, once you get through with that, then you basically almost reclaim the land area for that area, so it makes it, one, it's safer, two, plus it's a lot more efficient.
It eliminates the evaporation loss as well.
It also eliminates people like you swimming in those. Now lining, here you see, this is called a boosters product. Product is basically a carpet layer on both sides with a, with a polyethylene liner in between. And then from there, it's shock greeted and creates a, really the purpose of the shock greet is only to protect the liner, not necessarily for any water, married surface, but the liner is, is pretty much waterproof. There's a finished product and, and back in operation. Very efficient way to do these projects and come up with a really good solution for, for the, for the problem. Then pumping plant, this is the Semenito, this is probably the only, probably the largest single project, replacing almost a hundred-year-old pumping plant with a new facility, a lot more efficient. And so that pretty much covers kind of the sample of projects, and what we're looking for is continued support and passing of the resolution. So moved to the second.
Okay, good. There's a motion and a second. Let me just say, you know, we, we, there's gonna be more to this than just passing the resolution. I've told Wayne and Sonia that we really wanna be advocates for this project along with the irrigation districts. We think, you know, the county needs to pay, play a proactive role in helping the irrigation districts and the drainage districts get the funding in Washington. So I think you proposed that we make it one of our legislative priorities, and we have, and we intend to put our money where our mouth is and go up to Washington with y'all to help try to get the funding for these. So we're committed to this beyond just simply passing the resolution.
We really appreciate that, and we will, we will work with you every way we can on the visits and trying to get the funding and the support that we need to, to support these projects. These projects are very important for the Rio Grande Valley, and they're important for the municipal folks as well as the ag folks because every bit of the water that we save agriculturally makes more water available for the cities that have a much more reasonable ground. So we appreciate y'all's, y'all's.
Thank you, very good presentation.
Last time we went to Washington, before the hurricane, we went to, we brought back about ten million dollars, something like that. I can't remember how much it was. We've been having a good success rate, and we wanna work with y'all on that. So there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by my side tonight.
Aye.
Both motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Halbert.
If I may, I'll continue all this, send y'all this.
That would be great.
Very good.
Just a continuing education, so to speak, of what's going on. Appreciate y'all's input.
Thank you. All right, let's, we need, we've had our way for a while, so if I can just go into executive session, we can just move to executive session. Motion.
So moved.
Second motion, my commissioner, Tomayo, second, my commissioner, asking for discussion. All those in favor, signal by my side tonight.
Aye.
Both motion carries. We're not in executive session, pursuant to BTCA, section five, two-one-point-zero-seven-one, one A B two, five-two-one-point-zero-seven-one-two, five-two-one-point-zero-seven-one.
Try.
No, sorry, five-two-one-point-zero-seven-two, five-two-one-point-zero-seven-point-zero-eight-seven.
Take care of it.
Five-two-one-point-zero-seven-one-two. That's it. Executive session, by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tomayo. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
First item on the executive session. There he is. Did we come out of?
Yes.
Yes.
Twenty, A and B, possible action on confer with commissioners for legal counsel concerning Cameron County versus Farkner USA, formerly known as Ranmark. And B, possible action on confer with commissioners for legal counsel concerning issues regarding the Cameron County Detention Centers and the Cameron County Sheriff's Independence Station Building. We're motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved.
Counsel on both of those issues.
So moved.
Motion, my commissioner, Tomayo, second, my commissioner, Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by my side tonight.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Twenty C, possible action on confer with commissioners for legal counsel concerning Vicenta Cantu, Felix Armunios, Ruth Weaver, and Diamantina Alvarado versus Cameron County and Tony Seguero Jr., who will action number B-03096 in the United States District Court for mediation authority. Motion to acknowledge report of counsel and override authority as stated in the executive session.
So moved.
Motion, my commissioner, gonna be a second, my, motion, my commissioner, Matt, a second, my commissioner, Tomayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by my side tonight. Both motion carries. Twenty D, possible action on confer with commissioners for legal counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of real property for the Dancy Building renovation project. Motion to table.
No, no, no. Authority.
Oh, that's right. Authority to purchase certain tract of land, which is.
Lot five, one-twenty.
Lot five, lot what?
One-twenty?
One-twenty.
For forty-five.
For forty-five thousand dollars.
Subject to the requirements of removing the.
Subject to the requirements of removing the building on the side park.
So moved.
Motion, my commissioner, Tomayo, second, my commissioner, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by my side tonight. Both motion carries. Twenty E, possible action on confer with commissioners for legal counsel concerning discussion of provision for medical character jail inmates. Motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved.
Motion, my commissioner, Wood, second, my commissioner, Tomayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by my side tonight. Aye. Both motion carries. Twenty F, possible action on confer with commissioners for counsel concerning sublease agreement with the Golden River Enhancement Group regarding properties of La Paloma Park. Motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved.
Motion, my commissioner, Tomayo, second, my commissioner, Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by my side tonight. Both motion carries. Twenty G, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning the concession lease between Cameron County and Costa Rica Food and Spirits Incorporated and Aguico Properties LLC. Motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved.
Motion, my commissioner, Wood, second, my commissioner, Tomayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by my side tonight. Aye. Both motion carries. Twenty H, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning the concession agreement between Cameron County and affiliated management systems. Motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved.
Second. My commissioner, Wood, second, my commissioner, Tomayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by my side tonight. Aye. Both motion carries. Twenty I, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of land for a proposed park in the community of La Paloma Precinct Number Four area. Twenty, how do we say it?
Authority to make offer for the twenty acres, correct? Yes.
As stated in the executive session.
Yes.
Based on the appraisal. Motion, second. Motion, my commissioner, Tomayo, second, my commissioner, Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by my side tonight. Aye. Both motion carries. Twenty J, possible action on confer with commissioners for legal counsel concerning lease issues with the Cameron, with the Catholic Diocese involving Santa Maria County Park and Santa Maria Catholic Church. Motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved. And for authority to proceed this discuss.
Okay. There's motion, my commissioner, Matt, a second, my commissioner, Tomayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by my side tonight. Aye. Both motion carries. Twenty K, possible action on confer with commissioners for counsel concerning the possible annexation by the town of South Padre Allen, Texas of county-owned property located at the southern end of South Padre Allen. Motion to acknowledge report of counsel.
So moved.
Second. Then I'm gonna be a second, my commissioner, Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by my side tonight.
Aye.
We had a person sign up for public comment, you can come up. This is a thing by state.
First off, thank you very much for listening. I didn't know I could just come in and talk and.
Actually, you can. You have to do it at the beginning, but we're gonna let you.
I know, I appreciate it. Thank you. I just don't know how it works.
And we don't, we don't have the ability to respond to you by law. We can't respond.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
So don't get offended if we don't.
There's future.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I really only wanted to make a comment, and I'm just really here, excuse me, on my own. I am a member of the Surf Rider Foundation, but this isn't part of that. I just came, I just got there just to get here and show up, and on behalf of the people, families in the valley, who just love that beach, and it's such an important part of our lives. We spend so much time there. Not only the beach itself, but the jetties and the channel and watching the ships coming and going and the dolphins in there. I just feel like there's something, it does something to you to be able to go down there and you've had a rough week, or you're feeling bad, or whatever, and it just takes away some of that pain, or it just takes away, you know, washes your blues away, I guess, to go, to go down there. And I feel it's really threatened. We keep hearing, you know, it's gonna be great, it's gonna bring money to the county, it's gonna bring jobs, it's, we're gonna have lots of parking way over here, and you can take a tram to the beach with all your three kids in there, toys and your umbrellas and your food. You know, I mean, a lot of these things, they sound really good, but nothing's better than just the beach, you know? It's just, as it is, it's one of the last open spaces in the island except for up north, and, and that's hard to get to, and that's crowded in the summer. I don't know, they say that they're gonna, you know, make sure they have other places for beachgoers to go, and even that, I don't know where they would put it because it's crowded up there, too. But that beach in particular, I grew up playing on that beach, and, you know, now, of course, my kids are. And you see, it's a community gathering place. It's one of the, it's, I think, the only community gathering place of the island. We don't have kind of a, you know, spot where we hang out or we bump into each other or downtown or something, and that's an area where we do see friends and we do see people that we know from town from around the valley that come and enjoy it. And I'm just here on, just to, just as a public plea to save our beach, and I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Judge, can we consider item number nine?
Aye.
Consideration, please change orders between Cameron County and Junior Jones for the Dancy Building Project. I don't know why I didn't see you out there, Mr. Greason, I apologize.
No, it's fine, Judge. We have, we've been asked to bring you up to date regarding the closing of the Dance Building. There's a couple items that I wanted to discuss with you this afternoon, and I have here with the, Mr. Lee Evans, Mr. Brown, and Steve Nodch, and the George Jones Construction. I'm passing out a schedule that's been provided by the contractor in, in the condition of the project. I'd like to just bring you up to date regarding the current work being, being just going on right now regarding the site work. We have let a contract out with George Jones Construction to do the empty parking spaces, the site work, the infrastructure around the Dance Building, the landscaping, irrigation, curb and gutter, sidewalks, and the closing of Monroe Street. The first schedule that you have noted is the, is that work, and all this includes it is about two-thirds of the way done right now, it's supposed to be two-thirds of the way, and that is to be completed by April the second. That's the completion time under contract terms that you all have with George Jones Construction. The other thing that I wanna show you, if you can change over to this schedule, if you highlight any other. you highlighted in yellow, is a schedule that's been provided by George Jones Construction in the completion, not only the parking out, but as well as the interior. And I've asked him also to put in here some other, some other items that are part crucial to the movement of Cameron County into the Dancey Building.
That's not bad.
What we have is a completion time that, change over to page number two of that schedule. There's some critical times that we are looking at and the. We are, under the schedule that he has here, we're shooting for April the 15th to be 100% complete for substantial completion to get a certificate of occupancy from the city of Brownsville. Now, what that is, is that.
April the 15th?
April the 15th. April the 15th is what he is going to be shooting. The request that you, in the letter that we sent forward to you earlier, is the audiovisual system that we have part of, going into the, into the courtroom is, is not going to be there at that time. That's the only thing that's going to be not in place when April the 15th comes around because what is happening is that the change order that we did to upgrade the system, Ford Audio Systems, who is a provider of the system, is having a delay in getting us that equipment and it won't be till, it installed till May the 15th, May 15th. And so the change order that we're asking for the court is to entertain a change order in time only, May the 15th, knowing that the contractor is going to, we have everything ready by April the 15th. That's the commitment time.
Well, what does that mean in terms of our ability to move in?
April the 15th, you begin to move in. The furniture is coming in on April the 15th and it's going to be completed in about two weeks. So the rolls, the ball starts rolling April the 15th. That's the commitment time that we, we're asking you to approve.
So maybe by the end of, by the beginning of May, right? We should be conducting business there?
Joe?
End of May. Well, I'm more concerned about the fact that, you know, the DA's office and everybody needs to start doing things on this side and so we need to start moving over there, even if we're not able to have meetings and things like that.
Well, you have to keep in mind that, you know, there's insurance, the farmers that are, also have to take place, bills will have to, you know, the meters have to be switched over. So the commitment is really to have the building ready and available for you all to take over and, and begin operations as long as we have the substantial completion and a certificate of occupancy from the city. And that's going to be April the 15th. That's when the furniture begins to arrive. I notice there's committee being, there are meetings, a committee being held to entertain the, the moving of the personnel from here to the other building. So that has to be part of this, this schedule that we're working on.
Okay.
Does that make sense to you?
I think one of the things, if I understand what you're saying, Judge, is if we can take the building over April 15th, once we get the occupancy permit and start moving furniture in, we can, we can start moving, technically, I guess, start moving certain folks over there at that time.
Good.
And if we have to come back here and hold a meeting because we don't have the audiovisual equipment over there, we can come back here and hold a meeting until that equipment got installed on May 15th or whenever.
Yeah, like for example, the auditor's office can start moving, as I understand, on April the 15th.
Third floor will be through.
Yeah, and that way, that way the DA's office can start taking over the third floor now, as soon as, and not now, but as soon as he moves out of there. So that's what kind of, that's my concern. And we can have meetings here, that's not a big problem.
Also, keep in mind that, you know, part of this is that we're going to get a temporary certificate of occupancy from the city. Because as you know, we only have eight parking spaces there. It'll be completed, parking lot's going to be completed, all the side work, with the exception of the issue of the seventh period of the additional parking spaces that we need that are required by the city and we're still working on those. So.
And we approved today, just a little ago, going out and purchasing another lot for parking and we'll continue to do that until we get the adequate amount so that we satisfy the city's parking.
So, you know, all in all, the city's been cooperative and working with us. George Jones Construction is also in their contract to come up with moving dates and target dates of April the 15th. So I think all know the proof of this change order is really an extension of time to May 15th for the audiovisual to be in place, not to be, or in place, but with the condition that April the 15th, they're going to be a complete, substantial complete for y'all to move in.
I'm sure they want to get out of it as soon as they can. It costing them to be there.
Okay, your motion?
So moved.
This is a motion by Commissioner Benavides to change the, the date to May 15th, is that right?
May 15th, change order number five.
All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state of mind. I have both motion carries. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sorry to keep you waiting. You need to tell that man right there, when you need to, when you're here, because I won't see you. I mean, and there was like 50 people in here.
Got more done over there.
Wait that long. I apologize. And, and I wouldn't have made you wait at all, Ms. Vaissteros, if I would have got that little thing. So I don't want you to think. All right, minutes, December 13th, December 19th, 2005, that, you meant 2005 on both of them, right, Michael? Or that, or did they mess up in putting the agenda item in? Remy, did you meet 2005?
We're, it's Friday the 19th, you can come very well for it.
All right. They have motion to, are y'all ready on the minute?
Yes, I'm so moved.
Second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state of mind. I have both motion carries. Claims. Claims, Mark?
Your additions today, thanks for attending.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Benavides, their second motion.
Second.
You, you want to make, I need another commissioner.
Don't you want to do it?
Well, because I can't vote. I can't vote, but everything excluding the one claim involved. There's a motion and a second, any, on the claims, any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state of mind. I have both motion carries. Note my extension to Laguna Madre Water District, one, number 00154B82. Seven, consideration possible to amend the concession lease agreement from Cameron County on forces of the DBA, C Ranch rules for tackle.
Judge, Commissioner, this is, the amendment is what we talked about or discussed last week, I believe, in the executive session.
What is it? I don't remember.
It was 0 to 450.
And you agreed to that?
Yes.
That's, is that consistent with what y'all remember?
Yes.
That's, that's.
Okay. Is that what you remember too?
Yes. Second.
As long as everybody remembers, because I certainly don't remember exactly what it was, but I know it was my idea.
I know, I remember what it is.
My idea that I remember. And I know it was a good idea because, I know it's a good thing because it was my idea. Motion to approve by Commissioner who?
And I said.
You already forgot. It's the age.
All those in favor, signal by state of mind. I have both motion carries. Eight, consideration optimization to bid out phase three of the Cameron Park improvements under the board colonial access program. We have a motion to approve that.
So moved. I'd like to ask Pete when we think we can bid it out. I know it's up pretty soon.
Probably looking at, in terms of the next two weeks, three weeks.
All right, there's a motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state of mind.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Ten, consideration and action regarding hydrogen annex facilities.
Judge, I'm going to have to decide a big table.
They're not set at table. My Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signal by state of mind. I have both motion carries. Any questions, concerns, comments, complaints on the consent items and the travel item? Any, any issues there?
I'm going to.
Huh? Motion to approve items 11 through 17 and travel number 18.
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to ask number 17. Where's this space at? The office space?
17.
17.
The person I asked for Korea through.
On Korea?
It's right across that dialysis place or that?
Okay.
Yeah.
I know the place, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Concerns, comments, complaints?
You have a supplemental.
All those in favor, signal by state of mind. I have both motion carries. Item number one on the supplemental item, consideration possible action regarding interlokal agreement between Cameron County and the city for this book concerning the byhand grounded dust control restoration project.